Okay, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mark Kiefer. I'm calling to order the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission Public Hearing at 5:01 PM on April 17th, 2025. This is the April 2025 hearing of Beacon Hill Architectural Commission. Again, my name is Mark Kiefer. I am the chairman and I'm joined by Commission Vice Chair Arian Allen, as well as Commissioners Given and Steele. Let's see. Today, the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the subsequent revisions extending those provisions through, I think, through this year at least. Through 2027, thank you. We are conducting this meeting online, which is a Zoom, to ensure public access to deliberations of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission. Public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing, aka Zoom. If you missed it a moment ago, the hearing is being recorded, so all further conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has adjourned. And at this point, we like to acknowledge any elected officials or members of the media. Let's see, are there any elected officials or members of the media? I see Dan Murphy from the Beacon Hill Times. Welcome, Dan. Thanks for joining. Anyone else? Okay, we'll certainly acknowledge you if there's anyone else present. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. We'll give you a heads up when it's time to do that. We'll have a public comment period during the adjudication of each of the applications and we'll let you know when the public comment time has come. If you want to be heard on the record, you will need to raise your hand in the Zoom application probably via the button at the bottom. There are some handy instructions on the screen right now to show you how to do that if you've not had occasion to do that before. And Nick is going to need to unmute you, so make your presence known by raising your hand and Nick will call on you in turn and again, we'll give you the heads up when the public comment period, when we're at the public comment period. Okay, I think that is it. So moving on to the first item on the agenda. We are, change the order a little bit to get the housekeeping business matters out of the way right up front. This won't take a moment. So the first item on the agenda is ratification of the public hearing minutes from the March 2025 hearing. Commissioners, if you have any revisions, edits, comments, questions, concerns, please let us know. I have just a couple of minor edits, Nick. General question, which I should have asked you and I should know by now, but just the item 35 Beacon Street, I had recused myself and it's just listed in the, in the result as abstained. Is that how you normally do that rather than noting a recusal formally?
Yeah, it typically just put abstained. I think it's, but if you prefer, I'm certainly happy to change it to recuse, but it's basically the same thing.
Yeah, I guess I'm just rebundous caution. Noting a recusal will provide the further detail that the recused commissioner didn't participate in the discussion. Whereas an abstention, they just abstained from the vote. So if you wouldn't mind revision and then just a minor typo in the following one, which was 94 Mount Vernon. The proviso says that the upper, the top roof deck, I think you meant to say one or the other top or upper.
Okay.
If you see what I'm saying. Okay. And while we're at it, it's our really minor 22 Beacon under public comment, just noting Holland's remarks, the last sentence or the last part of the sentence proposed, I think you meant banned sign, B A N D?
Yes.
Okay. And sorry to my colleagues, I'm rambling a bit there, but any other? Is any of that not clear or any other edits or revisions to the minutes? Okay, if not, I will move approval of the March 2025 public hearing minutes with the aforementioned revisions. Do I hear a second?
My second.
Okay, thank you. We will vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Given. Commissioner Given, and that you're muted. And Commissioner Steele. Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Sandy.
I think you still have to unmute there, Sandy. There we are.
Okay, yes.
Great. Okay, minutes are approved. Thank you very much. All right. So now into design review portion of the hearing, the first item is 170 Charles Street. Is there a representative from 170 Charles present?
Yes. Christina Dakota.
Hi Christina, welcome. Thanks for joining. Do you want to give us a quick summary of what you're proposing?
Sure. So right now, we're just looking to kind of change out the existing planters on the, along the property line on Cambridge Street as well as Charles Street and then inside the vestibule area in the lobby, right outside the lobby entrance, we're looking to change the two existing four top tables to four, two top tables. And then take out the planters that were there to kind of add some more individual planters. They're, right now they're existing boxes. So we're looking to kind of do multiple and kind of add more plants in and around the area just to, for parents sake, to kind of make it a little bit more colorful.
Okay, and just for our edification, I think you mentioned the property line. Can you just point to the property line on this diagram?
Sure. Yep. So the property line is right there. Those eight, eight, six planters, they're eight, eight and eight. The size of the planters will relatively remain the same. Right now they're square 15 inch diameter and then we're going to be, the round ones would be 16 inch in diameter.
Okay, and just to clarify, so the, with respect to the furniture, the tables and chairs, those are all inside the property line as well as those other planters that are shown there? Okay. Very good. Okay. Do you have a, an image that shows what the planters will look like?
Yes, it's in the same. I can share my screen if it's, yeah, it's in the same pamphlet that was submitted. I don't know if you have all the pages. Yeah, there we go. Yep. So the planters would be a standard, you know, more of like a brown color to try to enhance the green. And then the tables, we're just looking for something a little bit more ornamental. Having like the brown wicker chairs with the brown base and then the ivory tops.
Okay. Let's see. And so the planters are just that sort of simple design and they're all, yeah, are they all the same size?
No, they're all different sizes. So there's a small, medium and large, and that's just to add the different height to the plants as they go along the columns. The ones that are on the property line, they'll all be the same size and the plants would all be the same size.
Oh, right. That's what I'm asking. Yes, very good. Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions about what's proposed? Okay, I'm not hearing any. Why don't we go ahead and take public comment on this? Again, so now it's time for public comment. If you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand on your Zoom panel, probably the button at the bottom and Nick will call on you in turn and unmute you.
Hey, first up we have is Holland with the Civic Association. Holland, go ahead.
Thank you, Nick. We do not oppose this application as proposed. The replacement planters, tables and chairs are temporary and are private property under the colonnade, not on a private way. Guideline K2 governing street furniture does not apply. The proposed card is also temporary and on private property under the colonnade and could be considered a storefront merchandise stand, which is accepted under guideline K1 and satisfies guideline K3 as it is in keeping with the architectural and historic character of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Holland. Mark, I'm not seeing any of the public comments. We can wrap it up for this application.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Holland. Yeah, I've heard the comment from Holland and Civic Association. This is, as I, as we would understand, if the table and chairs are wholly within the property line, which is say on private property, so they do not, as Colin mentioned, constitute street furniture according to, as we would understand it under our guidelines, just quoting guideline K2. Street furniture is defined as any structure erected or placed in the public or private ways on a temporary, permanent basis. And anyway, so I think we need concern ourselves mostly with the planters that would be on the street. By any chance, do you have a photo of what's there now? Just so we can compare.
The very first picture of the seminal would show what's existing.
Ah, right, okay.
Yep, there you go.
Right. Okay. Okay, Commissioners, any questions, concerns? Think I'm fine with this? Maybe we just make a proviso that's at Nick's suggestion, I believe Nick correctly, if I'm wrong, just make sure the furniture stays inside the property line, which you're intending to do.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, Commissioners, any, any other thoughts about this? Okay, I will move that the application be approved as submitted with proviso that the tables and chairs, proposed table and chairs be maintained within, wholly within the property line, which is to say off the public way.
I second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? We will vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Given.
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele. Okay, the application is approved. Thank you very much. You will get a letter from Nick outlining our determination and as always, if you have any questions, feel free to follow up with Nick directly.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, you too.
Bye bye.
Okay, next is 77 Charles Street. I see Patrick there. Patrick, is it just you or do you have anyone else? I think I saw, did I see? Yes, I see Julianne there as well.
Yes.
Who's, are you presenting, Patrick?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and then we've just unmuted Julianne if you want to jump in. So Patrick, thanks for coming in. Welcome. You want to just give us a quick summary of what you are proposing?
Well, essentially, somewhat minor, we intend to address the violation issues in a subsequent application, but in this time, what we'd like to do is to discuss the the lighting and the signage. And what's our other item here? The I'm sorry, what? Oh, that's right. The paint that we would, the paint is, is a little bit ahead of the game because in fact, the, that's probably should be thought of in connection with the larger reformation of the facade. So the, so the signage and the lighting are the central issues that we'd like to address today.
Okay, right. And I think that's all you're noticed for on this anyway, right? So.
That, that is the prior facade and there was a we at Hickox Williams were not involved at this stage, but what happened is that there was, there were some repairs which then snowballed and the building department, even though they visited the site, as I understand, quite regularly, did not highlight that the project had grown out of a simple repair and had become a substantial modification of the, of the elevation of the building. It should have gone to the Architectural Commission. That should have been, the building department should have forced that to happen, but that did not occur. Julianne Kylie, the owner, hired Hickox Williams after a major review in the fall in which the violations were discussed at considerable length as well as the lighting, not so much the sign.
Right, so, okay, so tonight, we're just going to talk about your proposal to replace the two spotlights that light the sign and then to essentially amend the sign with an additional component, right? And we'll, we'll come back another time to talk about the rest of the refurbishment of the storefront. Okay, so when we met last time, we had asked if it would be feasible to replace the lighting, but I guess it's, there's two aspects of this, right? Replace the lighting with something less unsightly, if you will, less industrial in character. We talked about the possibility of putting something on the sign bracket or otherwise above the sign rather than the spotlights at some distance. But in the interim, as I understand it, Patrick, you have done some further work looking into the, what evidently was transom lights of some kind above at the upper portion of the storefront. And it's, it's your intention, as I would understand it, to affect some kind of restoration of that glass and so forth. And I mentioned all this because even though we're not reviewing that right now, there's implications for the location of the lighting. Is that all?
Yes, that, that is precisely the situation. The the, it may be handy for us to maybe talk about transom sash or something like that because even within in discussions, talking about glass lights and, and lighting lights.
Oh, right, right.
Confusing. So there was a very interesting proposal discussed in the meeting in the fall, which I was not present, but I have studied the transcript in depth about the possibility of attaching lights to the sign. And there are some challenges to that. The, the bracket of the, of the, that carries the sign appears to be of some age. We don't know when it was installed. We do actually have quite a lot of material about prior states of the, of the, of the architecture of the, the building, but the the, that bracket is, is a, as you can see right there, it's a lightweight wrought iron structure of some elegance, I would say, but it's also very typical. There are a number of cases on Charles Street that have that kind of bracket, in some cases with no sign, even though they were clearly intending to have that, but the sign must have, the signs must have left, leaving only the bracket. That seems like an element of, of some historic significance. It would not permit it easy wiring in that it's solid metal. And the other thing is if wiring were to travel through the bracket, it would then have to travel down the chains from which the, the, the sign is currently hanging and we intend to retain that element and also just to leave it to, to, for the addition of, of another sign that would be hanging below the existing, those would also be unchanged and the chains you know, of some lightness, rather, a rather nice proportion. If there were conduit or even, even the heavy wiring, that, that would be a very different look and not one that would be characteristic. Another matter, going back to the issue of the industrial lights. Julianne accepts that and, and did in fact make an effort to present a replacement. We looked at a really ingenious suggestion on Nick's armada's part. And we actually have, we have studies of it. It's, it's, it's very heavy, unfortunately. It would be very heavy and I, I did a very thorough survey of this block on Charles Street. There are approximately 10 or 11 buildings, depending on how one counts a building, because there are a couple of, at least a couple of buildings that have been have been, have been joined together. So anyway, but the, the of those, say 11 buildings or 10 buildings, there are approximately seven illuminated signs. There are more signs in that, that some are not illuminated and of those, all of them have wall mounted spots. Most of them quite industrial and actually very similar to the prior lights on this, on this building, but the but there's some there actually are nicer. In some cases, they are, have black hoods and, and other cases silvery, white metal hoods, in some cases actually both.
I'm sorry, Patrick, I hate to interrupt, but just that as you're going on with your explanation, do you have any pictures of the lights that you do intend to use?
Yes, we do.
Yes, that's what we want to do. We want to stay focused on what it is that you, that you are able to do.
Trying to give the reasoning, but okay.
Okay, yeah.
Move to the actual spec, the figure, the, the lights that we're, we've specified. Yeah, there you go.
That's Nick, this is what you suggested?
No. That's what we're suggesting.
Yeah. Can we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I'm just a bit concerned. Can we, do we see what Nick suggested? Is there any picture of what Nick actually suggested? That's, that's appropriate for our neighborhood.
Arian, I think what Patrick just said is that they did take my suggestion, but they're, they're, he's speaking to some of the limitations of the existing conditions.
I know, I understand that. What I'm asking is just if we can get an idea of what it is you suggested. Maybe we can come up with another conclusion that would look a little bit like what, what you had suggested that might be lighter weight, if we can just get an idea of it.
This, this was my suggestion right here. You can see, do you see this little bar light right here?
Okay.
Can you zoom that in for us, Nick? I'm sorry.
Let's see, would I do Ctrl plus? Is it? Yeah.
That seems to be working.
All right, so that bar is supposed to be too heavy for the, for the wood?
It's not, it's visually, it's not having too much weight, but it does mean that there's wiring on the bracket, on the chains in order to be able to get power down to those lights.
Okay, okay, I understand that.
Can I ask Patrick, per the code and so forth, what are you able to do? What, just speaking in theory at the moment, does it have to be a solid conduit or can you just run actual cable or how, what's required there if you were to do it like that?
There are different ways of wiring and some of them are lighter in weight. For example, if it were a a low voltage light, then there could be a box on or in the building. There, and there, there, there are some limits on the distance, but I think that could be manageable. So then it would be a matter of of, of having a lighter weight wiring and I, I think, I think the, the, the the challenge would be, how does that interact with the chains by which the sign is, is, is is hanging? There's another issue too. And that is, let's say those lights have a certain relationship to the, to the to, or propose a relationship to the sign. That could be achieved by surface mounted fixtures that are on the building. It would have, the, the, the future transom window that's proposed would be, and if, would be, would make it impossible to have those lights in the same location as they used to be. They'd have to be higher, but we have, we're imagining a large wood trim, a large piece of wood trim above the the transom and it would be possible to take, say, the very fixtures that are in that lighting which Nick had proposed and with which we worked in that joint, those, those lights could actually don't have to be on a bracket of that sort. They could be wall mounted and I think they could be very nice. That, that would be very possible. So they're, 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 the, the, hanging the lights on the sign, as I said, is not done anywhere on that block. There's, there are 13 spotlights used to light signs on that block. As I said, most of them are industrial, but a couple are actually quite nice. And I, I think there might be a lot of value to having the commission or at least member, some members of the commission walk down the street and take a look at what's there and we could even do a mockup. Even though the facade is in the future, but the, but we could do a mockup that gives an illustration of, of, of the approach that we're proposing.
Okay, so here's my question. Could you show us one set of lights that look very modern for the neighborhood? Did you have something else to show us that would be appropriate for the neighborhood?
Well, the, the, again, the, the neighborhood has fixtures that by and large are industrial, a couple of them, and they exist in the neighborhood, are simple black cylinders, very, but some different sizes sometimes, but that's, that, that seemed, this approach seemed more anchored in the context, but it would be possible to have something that's more, say, perhaps more curvilinear or makes reference to older types of fixtures that, that we could certainly accommodate that.
Yeah, Patrick, I think from my perspective, you know, the issues here, that, you know, these, the existing fixtures are the ones that were there prior to the renovation of the storefront. You know, are clearly just industrial. There's, there's not, I think, much of any aesthetic attention there. That's just functional and practical and you know, given that this storefront has, you know, has, has, as it turns out, has undergone now a significant renovation. I think our objective here is just, I mean, I'm fine with retaining the lighting of the sign. It's, it's grandfathered. It's a business that's that has been there for, for a long, long time. And moreover, I make a distinction between those businesses that primarily conduct their business in the evening hours as distinct from just during the day. It's a restaurant after all and a pub. And so I'm fine with having lighting on the sign. It's just a question of, can we make it look better? And how do we, how do we best do that? How do we make it look better, both from the perspective of trying to mitigate the impact of the kind of industrial and if I may, unpleasant nature of the prior lights. And moreover, just, you know, kind of make it disappear to the maximum extent possible. And just by way of background, we, we had used as a, as a a reference, not necessarily a, you know, determinative example or anything, but the sign, the very simple sign that's at 1928 that was retained from when it was La La Roke, so it's been there forever. And it has right above the sign two lamps on either side. I'm not proposing that that's what we do here, but that was the inspiration for thinking of, can we somehow put the lighting in the same plane as the sign? Both to try to make it look less industrial and hopefully look more innocuous in the process. So that, that's by way of the background. The fixtures that you've proposed to replace the spotlights that were there, you know, I think there's nothing particularly important or historic about those industrial style spotlights that indeed can be found on a number of other Charles Street businesses. I think our objective here again is to try to make these things go away as much as possible. I don't think it's much of a historical anachronism to use something that, that's, that's contemporary for a contemporary function. But I think the question remains to Commissioner Allen's original question. Have we really exhausted? I'm not convinced yet that we've really exhausted the suggested possibility first by, from the prior hearing, which I appreciate you weren't there, and then Nick's follow-up conversations. And then Nick's follow-up conversations of of addressing the need for lighting on the sign. Above the sign rather than with spotlights on the facade. Have have we really exhausted that possibility? I see you rendered one potential um. Um alternative here, and you've raised the question, which I think is a good one. Um you know, are are we, i- is this the proverbial whack-a-mole where we get rid of one? You know, less than ideal aesthetic situation and simply replace it with another. We've got, you know, conduit running up to the bracket and then cables coming down on the chains and so forth. But um do you have an image of this in profile so we can see what it would look like relative to the sign itself?
Um I I recognize that the drawings are rather small. If if but if one looks back at the 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 those um renderings. Um you'll see the fixtures, they're actually canted somewhat. Um uh so that may help uh e- even though I recognize there that uh but I don't know um. Uh then Nick, do you, can you do that a a blow up um that um elevation again? Um or 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 that that series of elevations and we can look at them um next to each other. So that on on the, yeah, in each one of those cases, the fixtures are actually uh tilted. I I one one thing I would offer to the to the commissioners, fixtures that are mounted onto the sign. May actually have a prominence uh and emphasis. That a that a wall-mounted fixture that's black on a black um on a black um. Uh 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 the section of the uh wood articulation of the sun. It may be that would make it more prominent. Um uh did you have that this this can see if you can. Let we 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 should probably give you the um the actual literal dimensions. Oh, oh, you have the you have the specs with you. Um I think that it would be valuable to um to take a look at the the size of these. Um so the actual fixture is two and an eighth um across. It's very small and a if a historical fixture would actually be. In 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 historical style would be um substantially larger. Um so that is consideration.
Yeah, no, I I appreciate that. I I don't know that that was obvious from from looking at this. Uh and and they're to scale in your other in your other uh rendering, is that right?
You know, actually, I they almost look larger, but it's I think it's partially because they are counted. But so I think that they they were intended to be to scale.
Okay, let me just ask a clarifying question here. I'm sorry to interrupt. You're, I'm just looking at the, so so previously, they were in the lower panels, right? Where they're shown now.
Yeah, there you go.
And and you're proposing to put them higher because just for the commission's benefit. Okay, so so you you're.
But I I'll explain the logic. The uh our goal in in the in the next iteration of this process. Is to replace the historical transom that was on the building. And we have some pretty good documentation of what it was like. And it it takes up much of that, the sort of flat panels there. Above uh that the area above uh is a- actually has a massive. Um wide flan steel beam behind it. Um and and so it makes sense to have that fascia covering that. But it also gives a place where wire could actually travel in between the flanges um of 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 the uh.
Okay, so thi- this is this is what you have in mind for the sort of finished product? Where you you replace those panels with with windows.
Yeah.
And then the 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 existing, let's call it a freeze for lack of a better.
Sure.
Uh term remains, uh and then you would propose to put the lights on there and and uh, okay, so that's. Uh that's shown here. I mean, you know, that that I think is overall in my estimation and improvement over what's there. Basic question, Patrick, do the lights have to be that far apart?
I don't think that they do. Uh let's say, for example, one way of looking at it architecturally would be. Um instantly, this, we we've moved beyond this design a bit in that. There was a major uh concern about the um weight of the corner of those um. Essentially, we call them corner sash. We've been able to slender uh you'll uh make make much more slender that joint. Um in wood detail, the the prior was um was steel. And actually was not structurally adequate to for safety of 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 that window. But the um so we were planning on that being thinner, but let's say, for example, uh the lights were. Centered on those upper posts, which might be le- more slender as well. Um they also could be um literally mounted on tho- those post-like things, except it'd be nice to get them smaller. So I one one thing I should say, this drawing, only so that it would be sufficiently legible. Uh has the plates, the escuttsions on the 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 lights are attached to as both um. But as lighter in color, that is not actually an intention, it's just otherwise, it would be impossible to read on the um on the drawing.
So that you're saying they would in in effect probably blend in more?
That's 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 our intent.
That's the intention, yeah, okay. Um so you're saying maybe you you could worry the position of them and if you're suggesting center them on the two. Posts, like a better term.
And that and that and actually, they're meant, they're 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 many different types of of situations. On the street and that would be one and then the um. I believe the bookstore has the lights very close, um very close. Um and they're they're still wall-mounted, uh but uh. I think that I it it makes sense to have, I mean, an ideal angle for a cast light from a spot. Is essentially um ideally forty-five degrees, but it can be as as tight as thirty. Or sixty, depending on how you want to to look at the angle. They can be uh tighter than that. In this situation, we also would like to have the light able to thrust onto the sidewalk. That's where it become it becomes a real uh a safety issue. And the 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 lights were moved a year ago and there's been a lot of concern about the safety. Of people walking out of the pub and onto the street um and not really be able to see adequately. So um so we we'd like to have the um the 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 like cast in a way that would be. Uh not not just highlight the sign, but also make for greater safety on on the on the sidewalk.
Okay, you you mentioned the bookstore, by the way, and I'm just looking in in Google Maps right now.
I'm so glad you're doing that, cuz I was gonna ask someone to put it on our screen.
They appear to have a bracket for the lights right above the sign bracket, which.
Behind it, you know.
Um I don't know if if that's uh, it looks like in your situation, the plane of the. Building where the sign is mounted is, or the the the, sorry, the storefront is kind of proud of the plane of the building by several inches. So I'm not sure that would work here, but what about that as an as an alternative?
Can we show it?
I got you.
Thank you.
Covered by the tree and that one, but yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So in in a way that, there's a bracket, it has, it has uh so metal arms. Um on the building face itself. It also has a uh fairly prominent um. It's I don't, I think it's more than a scutcheon, it might actually be a box. Um and the actual weight of the arms going out to the fixtures. Is is not not, it it's fairly noticeable, really. And in in our case, that would be could be less prominent, only because we're talking about using the black. Um fascia where they would be more concealed. In this case, they're they're spanning over the um over the brick. And to some extent over um over a lintel.
Yeah, I mean, it it may be a bit of six of one, half a dozen the other here. Uh let's just go back to the question of hanging it above the sign. I think when Nick and I were talking about this. Uh it's quite a handsome sign uh that has been there for a long time. And you're you're planning, you're you're proposing to sort of augment it with a low s- a s- small lower panel. Um I think it it for me, it comes down to like, again, what is the most innocuous solution to this problem? And perhaps having a gangly bracket above the sign. Uh you know, six of one, half a dozen the other would would be, maybe is worse from that perspective. So I maybe I'm coming around to where you're coming from, Patrick. Uh tell you what, um. Oh, thank you, uh Nick. Yeah, so imagine in between the bracket and the sign, there's some kind of other bracket. Which itself has a couple of other brackets or arms hanging coming out that then light the sign. Uh versus uh whoever has the con, can you just point to where the spotlights would go? Versus a s- just a small four-inch-long, two-inch-wide, black spot on a black background sticking out from there. Yeah, I don't know, just looking at it from this view. Um. Maybe maybe that's Occam's razor here, right? Maybe this this thing is the easiest, is the best. Um and again, I'm I'm not personally, and again, I want to hear from my colleagues here, but I'm not personally concerned about the. Modernity, as it were, of those spots, cuz I I I think what you get in trade-off is they're just much more lower profile. Um you don't have that gangly um halogen lamp bulb, you know, stuck in it, which is silver. And draws attention to itself. Uh it's probably half as wide in 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 uh cross-section. Um so maybe it's, maybe it, I mean, I think I'm coming around to being okay with this in particular.
Well, you know, if you're gonna go by Sir William Ockley's thirteen twenty-four statement. That the simplest answer is the right one, the simple answer is simply to replace what was there in time. That would be the simplest answer, so if you don't wanna go with Occam's razor. I would say that let's take, cuz I keep on saying this, let's take a look at. Charles Street, um. He's mentioned that there are certain other bus- build uh businesses that have lighting similar to what he's proposing. I find that kind of odd because that's not really something that we were doing in this neighborhood. Um so I would like to see that, if we can take, go back to Google. And let's take a look at the shops and let us know what shops have the lights that you're talking about. Because I have to say, the lights you're proposing are way too modern.
Well, yeah, 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 here here's an example, and it's on Google. If you go right next door.
Yeah, Nino's.
You'll see that there is uh there there is a a a lamp that is lighting the sign. Um and it's, you know, it's it's, you know, it's a sing- well, they'll. Those cases, it's actually, um ours would be much smaller than those fixtures. They would be, they would be largely black. The actual lamps that are used for the lighting would be a a would be much smaller and much more refined. Uh uh than those, because they would be, they would be modern of LED with with. Extremely good color temperature, intensity and color. All of those could be modulated uh uh to be much more gentle than the harsh. Fixtures that are characteristic of the street.
Now, see, here's the thing, and I can understand where you're coming from, but and as much as we don't really want it to go the industrial route. We do know that we've got various histories in the neighborhood and looking at all these other lights. You're going away from what is currently here. And you guys know a big stickler for this, if we allow this, what's gonna happen? This is gonna come back again and again and again. If we're looking at what's on the in the neighborhood on the street. It might not be, hold on, hold on. It might not be the prettiest, but in keeping in the time of the neighborhood. I mean, this is something that we should really consider. Um Nick's idea, I thought that was a great one. Um I don't know if you wanna maybe reconsider what Nick suggested. But I know that you're thinking you need a conduit and try to get away from change and everything.
Um just sorry to interject, just cuz you um said my suggestion. Um so um I I talked to Patrick and his team, um and he explained the limitations of our original proposal. So I actually do support this proposal um because. The yeah, because it blends into the back, there's no, there was no electricity when this, when these properties were originally built. So everything is modern in terms of electricity, right? So this one kind of goes away, and I think this is the best approach um to illuminating a sign for a a business that operates in the evening. Um it it seems to me this would be a good approach, and I I am recommending approval. Possibly with the relocation of the lights somewhere maybe a little bit closer to the sign. But other than that, I think this is a great option, because again, it's gonna blend into the background. And if you can't see it, that's the best possible outcome for this type of illumination, uh in my opinion.
So are we going for that for the whole neighborhood? Because we do know how this goes, that we say yes to one, it's not free, it's not be a situation where. Others gonna wanna change as well.
There are qualifiers, right? Um so uh we had discussed at the last hearing, Mark made a good recommendation that this is a business that operates in the evening. So there's some justification for illuminating the sign at night. Whereas the other businesses that we see on the street, the vast majority of them do not operate in the evening. Um this one happens to uh be a good partner in the neighborhood and they're operating in the evening. And I I think there's a justification here for for illumination, so.
Yeah, I think we we can make, thank you, Nick, uh just a distinction area for what it's worth. Um well, two things, one is uh. Yeah, w- we're not adding illumination where it didn't exist before. And this is only before us because they were making repairs to the storefront and it wound up being this major renovation. We cited the violation, they've come before us, they've they've been. Quite cooperative, so so really, we're we're just, it, you know, there's there's no issue with respect to are we allowing illumination when our guidelines discourage it? Cuz it always had it. Um I personally would be just fine replacing all of the kind of crappy-looking industrial. Spotlights that are there now, all thirteen of them or whatever Patrick has helpfully inventoried for us. Uh with a low-profile design. And the other thing I would just say, Arian, for what it's worth. I would make this an analogy to uh, you know, the 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 uh the modern doorbell systems that we've now. Uh encountered and we've got a de facto standard for, you know, they're they're a, uh you know, a a bit of additional modernity with a new technology and so forth. But we've we've opted to allow them, understanding um that it's a it's a modern necessity and also, you know, safety issues and all that. But but we've we've asked applicants uh to do it in, you know, the most innocuous way possible. And ironically or interestingly, you know, because those cameras have gotten so small. Uh that's a technology that has actually gotten smaller in profile rather than larger. And so I think the overall impact, well, yeah, okay, there's a video camera there, unbalanced in my view, is positive. Because the whole profile of the thing is smaller and therefore less noticeable. And I think that's what I see in this proposal is. I I'm not so much focused on it being modern as I am on it being smaller and harder to see. And it just kind of goes away uh during the day, rather than having a big silver lamp hanging out there. Uh with an on an ugly conduit and so forth. So I think for all those reasons, I think this is a a good solution in this case. Now, again, we 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 adjudicate everything on a case-by-case basis. This has particular unique circumstances. And, you know, it doesn't mean we have to approve it the same thing in every other case. But I think for this particular situation, I think it is, I've convinced myself it's the best solution.
All right.
Uh I think we do need to take public comment, however.
We do, indeed.
So why don't we go ahead and do that? I think we're clear now on exactly what's uh the that the helpful background in terms of how we got here and what's proposed. So again, if you wanna be heard on the record, please raise your hand in your Zoom, using the button on the Zoom panel, and Nick will unmute you.
Mark, there um there's the element of the um. Yeah, so I just wanted to throw that out there before we went over to Holland.
Okay, uh so um commissioners, there's two other pieces of this. There's a there's a lamp in the uh residential entry, which is just to the left of the Sevens Pub entry. Uh they are proposing a a new lamp, either a hanging fixture or a pendant or a or a surface-mounted fixture. And an additional portion uh of the sign, uh thin band is with a similar uh style. And 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 materials that would hang off the bottom. Um which I think both of those are 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 less complicated and probably less controversial. So why don't we go ahead and take public comment and all the above, we'll come back and we'll clarify anything needed on the other two items and and we'll quickly get to those.
Okay, all right, Holland, go ahead.
Thank you.
Uh, we do not oppose the modifications to the blade sign as the black and gold carved wooden extension piece satisfies guideline I six. Our non-opposition is premised on the extension not being in violation of guideline I nine. Which limits signage as the proposed compound sign is for a single business and not multiple signs. We request additional detail with regard to how the extension piece will be attached to the existing sign. We do not oppose the pendant style light proposed for the residential entry lighting, but suggest clear unfrosted glass as appropriate to satisfy guideline E six. We oppose the proposed lighting for the blade sign as guideline I twelve discourages exterior illumination of signs. If lighting is considered grandfathered and thus permissible in this case, we suggest the lighting be mounted onto the signage rather than the building fabric. And utilize a more appropriate fixture style such as the goose neck style lights on the cheers exterior sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Holland.
Don't see anyone else, Mark.
Okay, um, let's quickly just, uh, Patrick, if you can be quick, just, uh, tell us. Okay, if we can go back to an image of the, the storefront so we can get the context here. Uh, let's talk, let's do the sign first. So there's an existing uh projecting sign. It says, uh. Uh, Sevens and underneath it, it says, uh. And Julianne, forgive me if I'm gonna forget your father's middle initial, but. I think it's John C. Kylie proprietor, something like that. And the proposal is, well, we're getting it up on the screen here. To hang a, a sort of an addendum. Uh, in the similar uh style and materials off the bottom, just a thin band. Uh, that says Anne Daughter, I believe. Can we get a image of that?
And daughters.
Daughters, pardon me. Okay, so that goes, can we, can we, do you have a rendering of the whole thing?
We do. We also have a, 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 we, we have photographic. An image as well, right? Yeah, so there's another one that, I mean, this is obviously a drawing. There's another, which is actually a drawing, but it looks like a photograph. And it has the existing sign plus the, the added sign. Nick, are you able to find that? It's, it's basically a street view of the, um, of the signage.
Uh, sorry, did you guys send that over today? I don't, I don't.
That was in the, that was in the package.
I did?
Yeah, you did. Keep going. There.
Yep, so that's the existing, but there's also one that has the sat sign added to it as well.
Well, while we're looking, Patrick, it's the same materials as the existing one?
It's the same materials. It would be the same uh colors um and. Not unrelated um. Uh, uh fonts. Oh, also inside, on the issue of the chain, uh, the, the, the suspension. Uh, the, it would be the same chain as used above. Uh, and. Uh, it would be shorter. It would be more like four inches than, um, than, than the, the upper one, which is longer. And actually, we would be actually tempted to shorten that, the upper chain uh a bit. But that's not, that, that was not part of our proposal, but. It, when, when we looked at the, um, at. Okay, so we can send one right now that shows this, but, um. It did seem that maybe the upper chains might actually be a little bit too long. Um, but, but that's, again, that's. We, we did not make that part of this proposal.
Okay, so, uh, and then the only other issue there, I think, is with respect to the sign code. Uh, it can't be too low, right? And have you, have you, Nick just sent me something on this, but can we just confirm that the result? Let's just stick with what you proposed at the moment, appreciating you might want to shorten the upper change a little bit to raise the height of the whole thing.
And that's actually a very good point. I mean, the, 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 the guidelines require that the sign not project. Below ten feet up from the ground or sidewalk and, uh. We, we. Nick brought this up yesterday and we, I didn't get out there with, uh, to, to, to verify. We, we had based the drawings on our, our, our field dimensions. And I think I can say with assurance that it will be, that there will be ten feet clear underneath the lower sign.
Okay, we, we can make that as a proviso. How about, I, I think what I would suggest is we make that as a proviso, so that when you go to install it. Um, understanding that you may wish to length, shorten the upper chains anyway, that whatever you wind up with can't be. Can't extend below ten feet above the sidewalk. That makes sense, right?
Yes.
And you've got, okay, ten foot nine, great. Um, and, uh, then the other issue with respect to the sign guidelines is the total area of the sign.
Right.
What's the existing dimensions of the one that's there?
Um, the, um, the existing dimension is, is the, the, is, um. Two, oh, I'm sorry, it's two nine and a half high and it's, uh, about. About forty eight inches wide, so that, uh, is, so we're, you know, it's, that's, that's, um. Here, here we go. We've got that dimension. Um, so.
Forty eight sounds big. I don't think.
It's, it's actually. We did not verify this in the field. That dimension came from, uh, the sign maker.
Oh, three foot ten, right there.
Actually difficult to get up there, you know, so, yeah, so two, two nine. And so it's, if one considers that these are not rec- rectangles. If they're rectangles, it's, it's still, it's probably right around twenty four square feet. But if you, uh, uh, consider that th- these are shaped and scalloped and the like, it would be le- less than that. Um. How about this? We, we will verify that it is not, does not exceed, uh, twenty four, um, square feet. I mean, we will, we will guarantee it. How about that?
Okay, we can make that as a proviso as well. That's, is that the code, Nick? Twenty four?
It's twenty four square feet total for the right signs that are at right angles. Um, not exceed twenty four square feet on either side. Uh, area of the sign shall not exceed twenty four square feet on either side, excepting that additional ten square feet is allowed for a sign. Yeah, so it's twenty four square feet, I believe. So I think this is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we'll, we'll make that as provisos. Um, so you can, you can verify that before you install it. Okay, let's, uh, so commissioners, any questions as to what's proposed? It's a little hard to see if you can zoom that in, Nick, but the. Um, that's the existing sign and the, the, let's call it the addendum sign that says end daughters. Which is four inches tall. Uh, and, uh. Similar width.
It's a four inch gap. It's, it's. It's, it's one foot two at, as measured, uh, as a rectangle.
Okay, uh, and then, so looking at the same image, that doorway to the left. Uh, on the far left, that's where the, you're, you're in proposing a lighting fixture that goes up on the ceiling there.
Uh, it should be a, a photograph that looks into that entryway.
Okay, and, and you've got two options, one a surface mount and, uh, the other appendant?
That's correct.
Okay.
Nick, yesterday suggested to us that we, we, well, when you see it, you'll see the fixtures, you'll see that they are black. Um, Nick suggested perhaps we should, uh, think, look at, at brass, which we have done since then.
Okay. By the way, while we're waiting, it's John, but forgive me, it's, I see now it's John D. Kylie. We walked, I've only walked under that sign about a hundred thousand times. Um, I think I would know that by now. Um. Uh, okay, so that's what you're proposing for the pendant?
Six o'clock. That's correct. It's, I mean, this is the, um, this. The, 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 the application included one that was black. This is brass. Um, somewhat similar in design. Um, I, I did review all the entryways and I noticed that actually. There are a handful of pendant of fixtures like this on the street. Uh, 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 and they're. They're often brass, that, that they weathered so that they actually look black. And presumably that would happen to this in time as well. They would, they would, uh. They would take on vertigery and dark and become dark. But that's, but anyway, they start, we'd start out brass.
Okay, so are you not proposing also a, a, a surface mounted one?
Well, we, we do have a surface mounted one. I have to say, um, because we went over it, I, I myself. Uh, went up and down the, the street. I'm now f- uh, favor the pendant. For a few reasons. One is that I found a few examples very similar to that. I mean, they, they were somewhat different in some details. They didn't have the cute little, um. Uh, stove top, but the, um, but the, but, but. Another relationship that struck me that was rather nice is the, the similarity to the gas lamps on the street. I mean, it would be much lighter, but it does, it does make ref, it, it potentially. One could think of that as, or it, it might affect ones, um.
Right, uh, and, and sorry, which is this, which one are you proposing? Is it this one?
This is what we did propose, and now we're proposing. Because that, this is all black, that's all black, and then there's another one, which is, which is the brass.
Okay, this one, and what's this called? I think I'm inclined to the, the, this one too, the, the pendant one. What is this called? So we can, for the.
It's, well, it's by a company called the Fourteenth Colony Lighting. They, they have very, very few fixtures. It's kind of a great company, but. It's, it's, it's just a number. It, 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 there, there are three different sizes and, um, the smallest one would seem like the right one.
Yeah, so thirty four oh two, Mark.
Okay, um, I, I'm, I think I'm fine with that in brass. Uh, commissioners, any other, uh, thoughts about that?
In brass, I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, it looks more like the street lighting, that last one.
Exactly.
I think it's better too, more, again, less, okay? That sounds good. Um, and then, um, with respect to. Um, and sorry, there's, there's, looks like there's four or five different brasses on the finishes.
Um, I frankly, I would think that the raw brass would be the best, because then it would weather. Uh, in the way that most of the brass in the Hill does. It does happen that in recent, uh. The recent half cen- cen- century, there are sealers that are, are, that are put onto brass. Uh, which may mean that they never change, they never age, and that. Could be considered a lo- a loss to not, to, to not have a natural aging of the brass in, in the, in the world.
Nick, do you have a view on this? You're muted, sorry.
I, I don't either way, truthfully. I think brass, um, I think the, um, the antique brass is a nice option, but I'll. I wouldn't lose sleep over any of them.
Okay, very good. Uh, that's, that's all I really wanted to confirm. Okay, great. Uh, and then commissioners, I didn't mean to skip over the. The sign part, but, uh, assuming, uh, it's, it's done in a manner, again, so there's the detail. Uh, it's gonna be just, again, same materials and so forth and, and coloring as what's there. And assuming they don't run afoul of the sign guidelines in terms of total area or the height, does anyone have any objection to this?
No.
Okay.
No, not at all.
Great, okay.
I, I would introduce one other thought. I mentioned this before. It probably, um, this, this was produced by the sign maker. I think it would be stronger if, can you bring the, 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 the photograph, which if the, if the fonts. Uh, were as, as closely related as possible, whereas.
I agree.
This one has a, a modern font for the lower sign and the other is. Um, um, more broadly historical.
Okay, and are, are you willing to commit to doing that?
Sure. And if it's right with, Julianne has, has been very quiet. She's there.
Uh, we're definitely willing to do that. Um, we have spoken to the company and I actually, uh, inquired today as to when the original sign was from. And it predates the guy who I've been working with, who is thirty something years old. Um, been there since I was a child. Um, it's gonna be the same company. It's gonna be painted the same way. Um, and I did ask them to make the fonts a little more similar. They didn't have time to come back with a mockup of that. But we want them to match pretty exactly, purposefully.
Okay, we'll make that a proviso as well then. Thank you, that, that's a great suggestion.
Sure.
Okay, um. Uh, let's see, uh. I think there's one issue remaining with respect to the lighting, since I think, I think we have a consensus about. Um, the type of lights and where, and, and generally them being installed uh on the, the facade rather than a bracket and so forth. But there was the remaining question of exactly where to locate them. Um, we could, uh, if, if that requires a little more. Um, homework and stuff, we could delegate that, just approval to staff, if Nick is okay with that.
Yeah.
Sure.
In other words, they're gonna go in that, what we're calling the freeze.
Yes.
The, 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 the shorter panels above what will be new transom lights, uh, uh, windows. Uh, but as for exactly where on, on, on that they go, um. Uh. We'll, we'll, uh, maybe just, Patrick, you just work with Nick to, uh, appreciate that you, you might want to just do a little homework to figure out. Is the light still gonna work right the way you want it if you move them a little bit? So we'll, we'll, uh. Uh, delegate that to staff. Okay, with that, unless there are further questions or concerns. Uh, I will move that the application be approved as submitted with the following provisos. Um, number one, uh, that with respect to, uh, the sign. That in its final configuration, uh, it be in all respects compliant with the city of Boston sign code and specifically. Uh, that the lowest portion, uh, of the reconfigured sign, uh, be no lower than ten feet above the sidewalk. Uh, that the, uh. New sign and it's, or that the completed sign in its new configuration with the addendum be no larger than twenty four square feet in total. Area, uh, that the font, uh, on the addendum sign, the new sign, portion of the sign. Uh, be made to match the existing sign. Uh, and then with provisos with respect to the lighting, uh, that the. Uh, light proposed for the residential doorway be specifically, uh, the pendant style light. Uh, Fourteenth Colony number thirty four oh two, uh, in brass finish. Um, and with respect to the lighting for the sign. Uh, that the, uh, final position of the, uh, spotlights. Uh, be delegated to staff, but in any case, uh, they are to be located in some, uh. A location, uh, in what we're calling the freeze, the uppermost panels, uh, of the reconstructed. Uh, wood storefront. And I think that is it. Anything else that I, was anything? Okay, um, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we will vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Given.
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, uh, the, uh, application is approved with the provisos. Patrick, you will get a letter. Uh, from Nick with the particulars, uh, outlining our determination. Of course, as always, if you have any questions, please feel free to, feel free to follow up with him. And, uh, we will look forward, Patrick, uh, Julianne and, uh, Hybridge. I know you're probably just off camera there somewhere. We'll look forward to your subsequent presentation, uh, for the remaining details of the storefront. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good night. Okay, so that concludes the design report of the hearing. Next is administrative. Uh, review, uh, commissioners, any comments, questions, concerns or recusals for any of the administrative review items? Okay, hearing none, I will move that the administrative review items be approved en masse.
Aye.
Sorry, do we, do, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Given.
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Sorry, did you take public comments on that?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, did I not hear?
I did, I forgot again, and.
Don't worry.
Even though Arian has reminded me about seventy five times. Because I always forget. Uh, does anyone have a public comment on the administrative review items? Thank you, Nick. Okay, thankfully, there appears to be none. But duly noted, thank you. One of these years, I'll remember that. Um. Okay, uh, then with that, administrative review items are approved. Uh, staff updates, Nick.
Okay, um, this is really quick meeting, which is really great. Um, so just a couple of quick staff updates. Um, just in terms of our department, um, so we have a new landmark, uh, which is three eighteen Metropolitan Avenue, which is over in Roselandale. Um, uh, so that is our, our latest new landmark. We do have an upcoming designation vote, uh, for the Old North Church complex. Um, uh, so that is our, our latest new landmark. We do have an upcoming designation vote uh for the Old North Church Complex. Um, that includes the church itself, the next door chapel, the parish house, and then there's a house over on the Prado. Um, I forgot the name of it and I'm, uh, my team will kill me, but um, that is also part of the landmark. So that's going to be voted on at the next. Uh, hearing for the Boston Landmarks Commission. Um, so finally getting that kind of under our portfolio. And then, uh, the, believe it or not, it seems like we did this yesterday, but the twenty twenty five uh chair, vice chair vote. Uh, should in theory happen next month. So, um, for those of you that are interested in maintaining your positions. Or would like to submit your name uh for a position, uh, just let me know and uh we'll, we'll put that on the agenda. So hopefully, uh, we can vote on it in May. So. So with that, um, I think that's it. Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, yes, indeed, quick meeting. Um, uh, great, thank you, Nick. Um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? Okay, uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Great, thank you all very much.